Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's council meeting. If everybody would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on tonight's agenda is the citizens' concerns about items that are not on tonight's agenda. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the mayor and city council on the record in the open public meeting. No immediate action will be taken on these issues in the interest of fair and transparent city government. All issues will be investigated, researched, or addressed as necessary and with the consensus of the city council placed on a future agenda. We do have a sign up sheet. If you have not signed your name and address, we will ask you to do that before you speak. We also will have a three-minute timer for our speakers this evening. So anyone who wishes to address the council, you will see the timer up over my left shoulder. Just pay attention to that because at three minutes, we will ask you to end your comments. So is there anyone who wishes to speak to the council? If you could, your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Rob Richardson, 2103 Washington Boulevard, Kansas City, Kansas. Honorable mayor and members of the city council. I've been engaged to represent Mr. Kevin Stratham, who owns 12340 Kansas Avenue here in Bonner Springs. And I'm here to discuss a future SUP that will be on your agenda, SUP 01-25 at 1800 South 122nd Street, the quarry. It appears that my client's property has been damaged and has suffered losses from past blasting. I think some of you have received an email correspondence related to that. But we have two requests of you this evening. First, when this item comes before you, we would ask that you please remit it back to the planning commission for consideration of the following things. Stipulations to protect adjacent property owners, similar to stipulations on quarries and other nearby Kansas municipalities. Limitations such as the timeframe of the SUP, the blast size, appropriate times for blasting, the setback from the property lines, and blast monitoring, including pre-blast surveys so that damage can be documented. We would also like to correct misinformation that was stated at the meeting about the possibility of the site becoming a landfill if the quarry was not approved. It appeared that this, to my client, that this issue might have been rushed at Planning Commission for a little bit, given it's a big project and the 20-year timeframe of the SUP. We would ask that you, as the council, deviate from your normal policy and take public testimony again on that matter. We understand it's unusual, but as I said, this is a 20-year timeframe. And my client conveyed a statement to me from the planning director that was something along the lines, well, we knew this was going to get approved. You should have asked for stipulation. And I'm pretty sure that was misunderstood, but my client is very upset about that because he didn't think he really had a fair hearing. And so with those two requests, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we will be back for the next meeting and hopefully we'll have an opportunity to speak. If not, we'd sure appreciate you sending it back to Planning Commission for further testimony and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that would wish to address the city council?
Paul Barrett, 3090 Union Make and Trust and Chamber Board. I was wanting to hear who the city manager is, but when this gentleman talked about the misinformation on the quarry becoming a landfill, I brought that up. If it was misinformation, that was no intent whatsoever. And one of the issues that came up to address it is that APEC or Holliday does not own that ground. It's owned by Deff and Ball or Waste Management. So when I heard that name, that's where I thought, I hope this does not become a landfill. So my apologies. I don't know. So you guys know where that apparent misinformation came from. But I do speak that night and this night as well in favor of it. When they had the seismic activity from an outside third party, it was well within the ranges and the guidelines that were acceptable. If I remember right, they were in the 30-some percent was the highest. The devices are surrounding the quarry itself, including some of the residents' properties. And so it did not go over a 30-some, certainly less than 40% at its highest reading. So the second thing is, on the request, what I understand is the blasting will be transitioning primarily from what has been above the surface. Their geologists found a larger than they knew amount of aggregate that they can get below the surface. So it's their intent to do a cave system. And when those blastings occur, there's much less explosives that will happen. So that activity should be less of an impact if there's any shifting to the ground, et cetera. And another big complaint was the dust occurred when a blast occurs. So if it's transitioning from above grade to below grade, then both of those should be minimized, reduced, or perhaps eliminated with the dust. So from a chamber representative, APEC Holliday has been a great business partner in our community, support a number of organizations. And I would say that for the future, if that's going to be what they intended to be, like a subtropolis, could bring in more businesses in the future. Storage, more income, hopefully growth, good positive growth to our community. So, and I can't wait for Agenda Item Number Seven. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Anyone else wish to address the city council? Please step forward. If you wouldn't mind, your name and address, please.
Mark Bisma, 540 South 122nd Street, Bonner Springs. I'm here today to speak about the special use permit application for the rock quarry at 1800 South 122nd Street that is scheduled to be presented on March 24th at the upcoming city council meeting. I, along with my neighbors, attended the public hearing that is being talked about and do not feel that the concerns of the nearby residents were heard. These included property damage caused by the blasting, noise disturbances, air quality issues, and heavy dust, groundwater concerns, aircraft use, road blockages, devaluation of nearby property, and impacts to the development of adjacent properties. Now, I just want to speak to a couple of the specific concerns with the special use permit as written. The permit length, APEC has requested a 20-year term, which is extremely long. Nearby quarries in Olathe and DeSoto have two-year and five-year terms, which seems much more reasonable. Hours of operation, the planning commission and council members should strongly consider revisions to the schedule of operations for the quarry. A 6:00 AM start time for heavy machinery routinely causes noise concerns for the nearby dwellings, and blasting on Saturdays is not acceptable. Blast limits, the Bonner Springs Quarry Special Use Permit does not have any additional restrictions on blasting limits. APEC in Bonner Springs follows the U.S. Bureau of Mines' safe blasting levels limit. Last year, the largest blast reported by the APEC third-party expert was 36% of the allowable limit at .75 inches per second. However, that is 150% higher than the limit they agreed to at their previously owned Olathe Quarry. Additionally, under the current proposed special use permit, the Bonner Springs Quarry could set off a blast three times larger than their largest blast in 2024 and still be within their allowable limit. Mining setbacks, the Bonner Springs Special Use Permit has blasting setbacks of 500 feet to residential properties and 200 feet to other property lines. Nearby quarries in Olathe and DeSoto, similarly located within city limits, have setback limits of 1,000 feet to nearest residents and 750 feet to the nearest property line. My last concern is that one of the most common reclamation uses of abandoned quarries are landfills. Even more concerning, APEC does have a history of turning old quarries into landfills in our area, such as the landfill at Overland Park at 167th and Metcalf. If this permit is approved, APEC plans to purchase their property from Waste Management. What is stopping the quarry from becoming a landfill after the special use permit ends? Thank you for your attention on the subject, and I trust that on March 24th, you'll vote in a way that reflects the well-being of our community.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the city council?
Hello. My name is Dylan Reynolds. I'm the proud owner and operator of Reynolds Snack Shack. It's not on the agenda tonight, but you guys have a bid open for Lyons Park concession. I'm one of the companies that put a bid in for that, and I just want to make appearance. I'll also be on March 24th here while that's on the agenda, so I just wanted to make appearance and see who was on the board and everything. So that's all I had.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to address the city council? Seeing no one else, then we will move on to the consent agenda. And the items on the consent agenda this evening are the minutes of the February 24th city council meeting, minutes of the February 26th special city council meeting, claims for city operations, and the 2024 fourth quarter financial reports. Staff need to pull, wish to pull anything? Is there anyone, the residents wish to pull anything? Counsel? Seeing none, I would go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Mr. Reeves, a second by Mr. Mac Mahan. If the clerk will go ahead and record the vote.
Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to item number one of new business, the vehicle storage building purchase and installation. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Matt Beetz, Director of Public Works. This is the first part of a multi-phase project that Public Works is ready to tackle. And this is to build the vehicle storage building between the new water plant and the existing Public Works facility. It's 150-foot by 80-foot structure, 18-foot-high walls, I believe, on the sides. It mimics pretty much like the Public Works Center's shop space. It's pretty much about the same size. This one will have on one end of it, it'll have a drive-through wash bay that'll help get us in guidance with like how we clean vehicles and whatnot. So part of what we did was we went to use the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing and located a couple of different vendors that actually provide these buildings. The one tonight is Clearspan, and we worked with them to, with our specs to develop, you know, what bid or what building we wanted. And their price tonight is actually, we'll come in, provide the steel building, and then come in and install it or construct it. And also part of their bid would be, or is to provide us a design for the footings and the slab for the building. That we'll still have to send out ourselves and get local contractors, concrete contractors to bid on. But they will help us put together that, that design that they will, that the concrete guys will bid on. Other than that, we plan on using a lot of our own staff to do a lot of the work for the building. Our water department will help with the water lines. And the, when we built the water treatment plant, this was initially part of that project. We had to pull it out due to funding issues. But the electricians still gave, put things in the project that, you know, there's conduit out there ready to run from the electric building and the water plant out to the site. So there's things like that that we've already taken the initiative to get in place. So I'll try to answer any other questions you might have. Kind of throw a lot at you here all of a sudden. But I think the second page on, you guys had was kind of a rough idea of what it looks like. The building has like a, kind of a barn lean-to in the back that is open on one side. That's for the utility staff to store larger items out of, out of the way of, out of the weather. So like fire hydrants, water pipe, you know, manhole lids, that kind of stuff that you don't want to really leave out in the weather all the time. So.
Thank you, Mr. Beetz. Is there any residents who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to award a bid for vehicle storage building, structure purchase and installation to Clearspan in the amount of $470,888.24.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Reeves, a second by Ms. Long, and we'll go ahead and start down there with you, Ms. Gurley. Any questions, comments?
I see a remaining balance of $829,000. Is that going to be enough to accomplish the concrete and the additional work to finish it off?
We are, we've set this up originally, yes, we believed it will be. Now, like, for instance, this building's gone up a little bit since, as of March 1st. I know my garage doors are looking, their prices I'm getting right now, they're going to go up again here at the end of March.
Pretty close.
So we're, we're working to get stuff encumbered now so that we can keep it in budget.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Woods?
And thank you for the amount of work that went into this.
Mr. Mac Mahan?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Ms. Long?
I don't have any questions, Matt. Thank you.
Yeah, I was expecting to see a lot higher bid on this initially. I'm thankful that's what it is. So thank you for working on things like that to keep costs down.
Sure.
Appreciate it. That's all.
And I really don't have much more to add to, I think, what's already been, what Lil's been said. It'll be good to have that facility there for our vehicles to, or that building there for our vehicles to be able to stay out and keep them from being weathered too much. So if there's no other questions, comments, concerns, I would go ahead and ask the clerk to go ahead and record the vote.
Voting on a motion to award the bid for the vehicle storage building, structure, purchase, and installation to Clearspan in the amount of $470,880.24. Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to item number two, award the bid for the 2025 annual mowing services. Staff?
Matt Beetz, Public Works Director. This is our annual mowing contract. This year, we actually had seven, seven contractors bid on it. One of those, we did have to kick out. It was incomplete. They only, had only bid on like certain sites. There's 34 sites total that the, this contract covers. But of those, the company that's done it for the last five years actually was not the lowest this year. They were the second lowest. We did call references for the recommended contractor and received pretty glowing recommendations from them. They have experience. My big concern really was with the cemetery because, you know, 14, 15 acres, 3,500 headstones. There's a little bit involved in cutting it. It's not just cutting a big open field. So this company actually has experience doing just that, mowing cemeteries. So I didn't see any reason not to give them the contract this year. So.
Are there any of the residents wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to award the bid. Oh, whoops. I make a motion to award the bid for the 2025 annual mowing services to Monson Lawn Care for an estimated cost of $60,255.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Wood and a second by Mr. Reeves, and we'll start down there with you, Mr. Reeves. Any comments, questions?
I'm glad to hear the concern for the cemetery. They're fully aware of what we expect, right?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Last year, they did a pretty good job, except maybe right at the end. So.
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Mac Mahan?
I'm sure they love that top of grass we have. It's that tongue-in-cheek.
Thank you for the details.
Yeah. Is this just for the cemetery?
No, 34 sites total around town. Yeah. This goes anywhere.
How many square feet you, did you bid that, is that bid up by square feet?
No, we put together a map with all 34 sites and give them a little outline of the area that they're supposed to mow. And then our staff will actually go out before they mow it the first time and actually mow it once so that they can see where to mow.
So is this like a Kansas City-based company that's going to be doing it?
This one, no. They're out of Horton.
Horton?
Yeah. It's quite a ways away, but, you know, honestly, the company that's done it the last several years, they were quite a ways away as well. And, I mean, there's companies on here from Topeka that actually bid on this. So it's, whether the home base may be outside of the metro area, they, a lot of times will have crews locally. I can't speak with this one. I haven't met with them yet, but they're, I mean, they're all aware of.
So you're, you were saying too, just the bid was favorable, because we're not always looking for the cheapest bid. We're looking for quality work at a, at a good price. But, so they weren't, they weren't the cheapest, but they weren't, they were somewhere in the middle, I guess.
They were the lowest bid, weren't they?
Yeah, Monson was the lowest, yeah.
So good. Can I retract what I just said?
I didn't hear it. No, that's fine. Ms. Woods, anything?
No.
Ms. Gurley?
Did the company that we have used the last few years not respond?
No, they did respond.
I couldn't remember the name of it.
Yeah, they were in second.
Okay, thank you.
Second highest.
Second lowest.
Second lowest. And just quick math, does the breakdown of multiplication fall within budget?
Yeah, I believe so.
Knowing that some have to be done more often than others?
Yeah, we tried to put together a list of what, you know, everyone knows kind of what they roughly cost and then.
That what the breakdown is on here is the total that it will cost for the year? Or is that the amount that was budgeted for each quarry?
Let's see, on the memo that you have, that is the amount to mow all of the sites, all 34 sites in town, one time. So some of the sites get mowed once a week and the other ones get mowed every other week. And then they, we'll split those up. They don't mow like every one of them.
So this line item, this cemetery is $32,240. Is that the amount budgeted? Or is that what it will cost to have that done this year?
As of, by our calculation, that's what it's going to cost.
Going to cost, okay. Perfect. That's where I wanted to get to.
I'm sorry, yes.
I didn't ask the question correctly. That was on me. Thank you.
Did they give you any cost on any additional add-on services?
We ask for a hourly rate for mowing and weed eating as well. But that's not calculated in here. It's just something we have on, now we have it in.
Did they give you a competitive hourly rate as well?
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah.
Yeah, I've got one more.
Sure.
On Spring Creek, will they be doing any mowing on Spring Creek, especially where that dogleg curve is that we always seem to have a problem with?
Yeah, that, there along.
Linder Lane?
Linder Lane, yes. That's one of the sites on, that's included.
Yeah, they're by Dale Herring's house.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, that, it's all the same sites that we've had in the past. I think we added two sites. We added the entrance sign down by, across from the old Sonic Building. In the past, our Parks and Rec departments kind of handled that one, but we've been sending more of this over to the contractor. There was another one. Trying to slip into my mind right now what the other one was. There was two this year. It was additional from what we've done in the past.
Anyway, thank you for trying to stay on top of that. That's always a little bit of a problem there, I know. And so anyway.
And it's usually just a communication thing with them, what we expect them to do. Because, you know, they're a long part of that hit area. It's pretty steep.
Yeah.
Sometimes you can't get it with a mower. You have to do it with a weed eater. And a lot of these contractors want to get in and out, and they don't understand, oh, I got to weed eat that.
Yeah.
Whole hillside. They do it.
Good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I would go ahead and ask the clerk to go ahead and record the vote.
Voting on a motion to award the bid for the 2025 annual mowing services to Monson Lawn Care for an estimated cost of $60,255. Wood?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes. Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
On to item number three. Thank you, Mr. Beetz. On item number three, award the bid for the library HVAC hardware. Staff?
Good evening. I'm Jack Granath, the Director of the Bonner Springs Library. The library has had it in their capital improvement plan, their long-term plan, to replace two rooftop units of our HVAC system, which are now 16 years old. So we have that in our budget for this year. We put out a request for proposals and received two. One from SGI in Pleasant Hill, Missouri for $81,200, $81,230, and a second from Cool Heat KC, which is here in Bonner Springs, for $83,503. I met with city staff and with a library board member to discuss the bids that came in. And we decided that the slightly higher bid is preferable. The bid is much more detailed. It has line items in there, including one repair that would be necessary for a curb adapter that accounts for the difference in price between the two bids. We also prefer working with a local business, and we have an ongoing relationship with Cool Heat KC. They provide our service for the existing system. So we are recommending that. We had budgeted $140,000 for this, so that we, this is significantly under budget. We're also requesting that we use that excess budget authority to work on some exterior lighting at the library. We've had some complaints about insufficient lighting in the parking lot. So we'd like to move on to address that with the excess budget authority.
Staff, have anything else to add? Is there any residents who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to award the bid for the replacement of two HVAC rooftop units at the Bonner Springs Library to Cool Heat KC LLC in the amount of $83,503 and allow the excess budget authority to be applied to the upcoming library exterior lighting project.
A second.
We have a motion by Mr. Mac Mahan and a second by Ms. Gurley. We will go ahead and start there with you, Mr. Mac Mahan.
I had a chance to think about it again. I'm just kidding. Jack, thank you for all you're doing. Are we having any, I'm very frugal. Are we having any issues with, are you even, is this just jumping out in front of it just in case because there is a life expectancy with these units and it's best to get them fixed?
That's right. That's right. Before they break down. Yeah, the previous city manager thought that they should be replaced at 10 years, and he was probably right for older units. I've been asking a lot of other people now, and they're saying 15 to 20, so we're at 16. But we did put in quite a bit in repairs, in not recent years, but a few years back, a little bit prior to the pandemic. And we had a, an inspection in 2023 that said you're going to have to put in $9,000 in repairs or, or replace. And actually today, someone was out today and looked at it and said, here's a list of repairs or replace. So it's a choice between putting a bunch of money into it and then replacing it in two or three years. We're just replacing it now.
Thank you.
Ms. Woods?
Thank you for keeping the library up.
Ms. Gurley?
We're replacing two out of how many units total?
Two.
Two totals, so this will redo the system.
Right.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Long?
I know from previous discussions, this has been an issue for a while. So thank you for your patience and also waiting for the budget money to be in the right spot and for awarding the bid to a local company. So I don't have any questions.
Mr. Reeves?
Yeah, I don't think you'd be sorry you got Cool Heat. I've heard lots of good things about them. I've had a good experience with them too. So that's good. Thank you.
And I know, I think, staff down, Amber, Ms. Fogan can attest to the fact that we've had, we've been utilizing Cool Heat for a short period of time, and we've been real happy with their, with their performance. As well as for, even if it wasn't. happy with their, with their performance, as well as for, even if it wasn't, even if there wasn't the extra cut that was taking place that accounted for that $2,400, I think that's a small amount to pay to keep and give that business locally. So if there's any other questions, comments, I would ask the clerk to go ahead and call for the vote.
Voting on a motion to award the bid for the replacement of two HVAC rooftop units at the Bonner Springs City Library to Cool Heat KC LLC in the amount of $83,503, and allow the excess budget authority to be applied to the upcoming library exterior lighting project. Long?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mac Mahon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
On to item number four, award the bid for the library HVAC software. Staff?
So Jack Granath, the director of the Bonner Springs Library. Also part of that project is we have been intending to replace the software controller for the HVAC system for several years. A lot of problems with that. It runs on Java. It just, it runs on a system that's really no longer supported. In order to, to control the system, I have to remote into another computer that's old enough to still run the software. So we've looked into that in the past, and we thought it makes sense to, to replace this at the same time that we're replacing the hardware. So we, we put out the, the request for proposals at the same time that we did for the hardware, and we received only one, and that was from i Controls, who are in Lee's Summit, Missouri, at a cost of $9,800. That is the company that provided our current controller that they put in sixteen years ago, and we were happy with it. Obviously, ran beyond its, its lifetime, but the company was easy to work with, and I don't have any problems or any hesitation in working with them again.
Staff have anything else to add? Is there any, anyone from the public who wishes to address this item? Seeing none, I would go ahead and accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to award the bid for replacement of the HVAC global controller software at the Bonner Springs City Library to i Controls, Inc. in the amount of $9,800, and allow the excess budget authority to be applied to the upcoming library exterior lighting project.
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Long, and, okay, I'll go ahead and give the second to Mr. Mac Mahon. So we'll start there with you, Ms. Long.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Jack.
Go ahead, Mr. Reeves.
No other questions here. Thank you.
Mr. McMahon?
Sounds like you're going to make sure this lighting project is covered.
Got plenty of budget authority, right.
Thank you, Jack, for all of your.
Thank you again for all the work you do.
I was just curious about the cost difference between the suggested replacement in 2022 of $37,000 versus the $9,000 now.
Right. Well, I was shocked by that. When that came into, it wasn't anything that we solicited. It was with the company that we worked with before. They went out and they got this for us. It came in at $37,000, and that was so shocking that it's been year, you know, two, three years later that we're finally getting to it, and we just didn't think that we could do that. But so I was, this seemed to be more like what I expected originally.
Good. Thank you.
The, is there any maintenance cost, ongoing yearly maintenance cost for that software?
That's an option, and I don't know the cost of that, but we did that before with them, and it was worthwhile because it included a certain number of hours of training staff on the system that we took advantage of. But after a while, we found that usually when there's a problem with your system, the software people are going to point at the hardware people, and the hardware people are going to point at the software people. So we, we didn't feel that it was, it made sense to continue with that contract. But they still, as I said, they're easy to work with. They answered questions once we were outside of that agreement. So, yeah, I don't know if we would, we'd probably look at their service contract and decide once we see the software in place, but I don't expect that to be part of it. And it would come out of the library's operating expenses anyway.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, I would go ahead and ask the clerk to go ahead and record the vote.
Voting on a motion to award the bid for replacement of the HVAC global controller software at the Bonner Springs City Library to i Controls, Inc. in the amount of $9,800, and allow the excess budget authority to be applied to the upcoming library exterior lighting project. Mac Mahon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
On to item number five, replat, FP 0125, replat of 1715 and 1725 South 138th Street. Staff?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Mark Lee, Community Development Director. Yes, we're looking tonight at replat of lots one through eight of Block Four of the Grandview subdivision of Saratoga Park, originally platted, I don't know, I'm sorry, don't have that readily available, many, many years ago. We'll put it that way. It's been around for a long time. This evening, though, we're looking at taking, there's really two parcels now that have homes, and then there's an empty one behind them, so we're going to take that and divide it up just like that. There'll be one parcel that has the existing home. There'll be one that had an accessory dwelling unit at the time, but now it will be its own standalone home, and it leaves a lot behind them to develop. Plat's been reviewed. Everything should be ready to go. Got some revisions done, sent it back out to the county, and they were acceptable, so it should be ready to go.
Anything else to add by staff? Any of our residents wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I would go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the dedication of the public right of way and assessment for the replat of 1715 and 1725 South 138th Street.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mr. Mac Mahon, a second by Ms. Gurley. We'll go ahead and start with you, Ms. Gurley.
No questions at this time.
Ms. Wood?
None.
Mr. McMahon?
None.
Ms. Long?
No question.
Mr. Reeves?
Real quickly, those lots then still are qualified still, they can be separated down, because I know say we're, one of them was a pretty small slot, but it's still within the.
Yeah, sixty foot is the minimum.
And then, and the two properties, the two buildings that were there didn't share any utilities, and also they are completely independent. Good, I'm glad to see.
I should have mentioned too, sorry, sir.
You're fine.
They did, they did donate and some additional right of way for future expansion of 138th Street.
And that's important, because eventually that will hopefully be where the next segment goes on the improvements. So if there's nothing else to, any comments, question? You got something, Ms. Long?
No.
Oh, you were hitting your mic, so I thought you had something. No problem. Just getting prepared. Then with that, I will ask the clerk, city clerk to go ahead and record the vote.
Voting on a motion to accept the dedication of the public right of way and easements for the replat of 1715 and 1725 South 138th Street. Long?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Mac Mahon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to item number six, ordinance to extend the allowed camping permit length to ninety-six hours. Staff?
I'm sorry. We're joking around. It's staff is who would take this one, and I got the short straw. In front of you is an ordinance to increase the length of time for camping. Yes, in all honesty, I suppose this does kind of revolve around Country Stampede and their request. What they like to do is try and get individuals in the night before or the day before their events actually start, so that gives them that window of basically Wednesday evening through Sunday. We all sat down as a group, fire department, police, city clerks, city, everybody we could get involved, and all came up with what's in front of you this evening.
Anything else to add by staff?
It would still require a permit, so it's not, don't think that anyone could just camp out for ninety-six hours. It would still require a permit to be able to camp.
Shoot, I was going to make some extra money in my back, a lot part of my property, but.
I'm sorry if you don't mind. I was trying to think, did we, did, we had a caveat in there about special events as well, and now I can't remember if that's, that was just a necessity or how we dealt with that. I apologize for that one.
I see the red line here.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any residents that wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I would go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City, Chapter 12, Public Offense, Article Three, yeah, I'm going to, camping permits to extend the allowed permit length to ninety-six hours.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Reeves, a second by Mr. Mac Mahon. We'll go ahead and start down there with you, Mr. Reeves.
Yeah, on this, does this apply to anybody that wants a permit, or is this just for retail customers that are wanting to be here for whatever reason, or?
It's, it would allow it on private property or through invite, is the way I believe it's worded, but it's not, I still believe there's no camping in city parks or anything like that allowed. It's strictly private property by invite.
But so I could have somebody camping in my backyard, they'd have to get a permit, right?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at our city clerk. I'm sorry, but.
So it does allow on, on public property, private property with a permit for up to ninety-six hours.
But the key is permit that has to be approved by staff.
Yes.
And what is the cost of the permit to do this camping for the ninety-six hours?
Staff will come back in the next, at the next council meeting with a request to update the city fee schedule. We're looking at making that, there's a flat fee for the permit that's already in place of $10, but we're also looking at adding a deposit, very similar to what Parks and Rec does, for their buildings to cover the cost of any, any cleanup or anything like that.
Would that take care of any damage to the parking lot or anything like that that might?
That's the intent.
Okay. That's all.
Okay, Ms. Long?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. McMahon?
So this applies also to, say, someone that came into town, and they got a fifth wheel that's sitting out on this curb plugged in. No, not at all.
No. No, actually, I think RVs are actually taken out of it. You cannot have a recreational vehicle. It's just basically tent camp.
Tents, and that's it. Okay, thank you.
Unless through a special event.
Gotcha.
Case in point, Country Stampede, where there's RVs, but that's private property. So they're not parked in the public right of way or anything like that.
Sure. Thank you, Mark.
All the questions have been asked that I had. Thank you.
Ms. Gurley?
Since this is kind of precipitated by Country Stampede, were they good stewards of this policy last year?
Yeah, they were. They were, and actually, and talking with the chief of police and fire chief as well, there was, I think, one incident, but it really, I guess I can say we were amazed and surprised at how well it went off with Little Hitch, so we're hoping it kind of continues that route.
There was no extensive damage to the grounds or anything?
And if there was, they repaired everything. The Ag Hall of Fame was, is still all in support of it and everything. That, it's, I guess, since we're talking, it's coming up for special use permit request here again, so that's kind of teeing it up for that. But yeah, everyone, everyone was still on board, and everyone was happy with, with the outcome.
Are there any limits to this policy, or maybe it's, maybe that limit needs to be attached to the special use permit on number of tents or size of event? Because I think the goal was, again, talking about Country Stampede, because it's the only event I have to reference.
Right, sure.
For them to grow. Are there guardrails around size, or does that matter at this time?
I think at that point, we would take it, it would end up special use permit, and we'd address it at that time. Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
I don't have anything else to add. Is anybody else? Okay, with that, then I would go ahead and ask the clerk to go ahead and record the vote.
Voting to, on a motion to adopt an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City, Chapter 12, Public Offenses, Article Three, camping permits to extend the allowed permit length to ninety-six hours. Long?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Mac Mahon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to item number seven, point a city manager and approve the city manager's contract effective March 11, 2025. I don't know if staff needs to add anything to this at all. Otherwise, I will, did you guys flip a coin or whatever, decide who's going to make this motion? Because I know everybody's going to yell at the mics at once, so I will go ahead and ask for a motion.
Read the motion on the sheet, not on the screen, please.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Mayor, I make a motion to approve the city manager's contract with Amber Vogon effective March 11, 2025.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Mac Mahon, a second by Ms. Woods. Is there anybody from the residents would like to speak on this item at all? More than welcome to. Okay.
It really is a big deal.
We'll go ahead and start right here with you, Mr. Mac Mahon. Any comments?
Congratulations. You got through it all. So we look forward to this, right? You know, filling the, Sean's gone, and his tenure was what, a long?
Nine years.
Nine years. And she's Bonner. She's graduated from Bonner. She's well-adapted and committed to the community, and I just think it's, and we did interview a lot of people, and she, believe it or not, we weren't partial, because I think we were open-minded to this process, and she rose to the top. So congratulations, Amber.
Absolutely. Welcome.
Yeah, I think, I think it's important that the public, the residents know we did go through the entire exercise. We have forty-five applicants.
Yeah.
And narrowed it down to in-person interviews, and we're excited.
Ms. Long?
No questions, just congratulations.
Mr. Reeves?
What? Oh, nothing here.
Did you say you didn't everything?
Nothing here.
Huh?
Nothing here.
Really? I will just say this, that I think not only did she, Ms. Vogon, rise to the top, but I think from her standpoint, I'm sure she's happy we did go through the exercise, because I think it provides confidence to her that we believe that she can do the job. So with that, I would go ahead and ask the.
On behalf of Roger Shannon, I have a five-minute.
Dissertation.
Dissertation of praise for how excited we are that you have this position. So extrapolate that at your will.
And with that, I would ask the city clerk to go ahead and call the vote.
Voting on a motion to approve the city manager's contract with Amber Vogon effective March 11, 2025. Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Mac Mahon?
Yes.
Motion passes. And I'd like to say real quickly, we're sending out an email to the city staff this evening, so that they will have that first thing in the morning, and then a public announcement will be made tomorrow, so that everybody.
And let me be the first to tell you, welcome aboard, Ms. Vogon. I can quit calling you interim city manager.
That's right.
Even at the meetings I had this weekend or Friday, it still was interim city manager. So, so on to item number eight, executive session to discuss a development agreement pursuant to, to exception for consultation with an attorney, KSA 75-4319B2. Would somebody like to make that motion?
How much time would you like?
And do we have a time we expect to be in there?
Forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes, so returning at nine then?
Thank you. I will make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to the exception for consultation with an attorney, KSA 75-4319B2. The open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:00 PM.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Gurley, a second by Ms. Long. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will be back in forty-five minutes.
Hey, at least one person hung around.
I'll take your seat. I'll get that extra chair out.
Do you have an agenda item left? Wow.
Was it will oral machines?
So those trash cans are, you ever heard of possessions not tenses alone?
I bet we could put Chris in one of those.
Okay, everyone. I would accept a motion to resume the open meeting at 9:01 with no action taken.
So move.
Hmm? No. We have a motion by Ms. Gurley, a second by Mr. Reeves. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. On to item number nine, approved notice of public hearing and scheduled public hearing to modify the original Westgate redevelopment district. Staff?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tyler Relsworth with Q-Tac Rock, the firm's bond counsel.
Tyler Ellsworth with Q-Tech Rock, the firm's bond counsel. So, we were here, I think, in late January, and had you consider and approve a resolution setting a hearing that was to occur this evening to expand the existing Westgate Tiff District. Now, the Tiff Act requires that certain notice be provided for a public hearing of that nature. There are mailed letters that go out, and there's a publication that's to run in the newspaper. I was on top of the mailings, and those got done. I did not double-check that the newspaper notice ran, and so it didn't run. And so, we're here tonight requesting that you repeal the resolution that you approved at the end of January, put a new resolution in its place, and reset the public hearing that was supposed to occur this evening to your April fourteenth regular council meeting.
Do you think staff needs to add? Would any of our residents like to talk on this item? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt a resolution to set a public hearing for April the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven thirty PM to modify the original Westgate redevelopment district.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. McMahon, a second by Ms. Gurley. Any comments? We'll start here with you, Ms. Long.
No, thank you.
Mr. Reeves?
Not yet. Thank you.
Mr. McMahon?
I have no questions.
Ms. Wood?
Thank you very much for all the information you gave us, but no comments, except for that.
Ms. Gurley?
Nothing, thanks.
And I've got nothing to add. If there's nothing else, then I would go ahead and ask the clerk to go ahead and call the roll.
Voting to adopt a resolution to set a public hearing for April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven thirty PM to modify the original Westgate redevelopment district. Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to reports. City manager's report.
City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Ellsworth.
Right. First of all, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to serve. I'm very excited about it, and I hope that we can get a lot accomplished, so I'm really looking forward to it. I'm sure many of you have seen that the work at one hundred, one-twenty Oak has started. They started their dirt work today. The parking lot down there is closed, so that they can get their dirt work completed. We'll keep an eye on public comments for that and any parking issues we may see. The One Hundred Thirty-Eighth Street project should start in April. They had the pre-construction meeting for that, and once we get a schedule of how they're outlining their work and what will be done first, we'll have that available. We believe that it'll be utility work first for the water line and the gas line. The sidewalks on Morse and Second Street will begin this month, weather permitting. And then, I just wanted to make sure you all know that we will probably have some phone outages tomorrow for some server work that's going on. It could possibly be intermittent on Thursday and Friday as well, but the majority of the work will be done on Tuesday, tomorrow. They'll make sure that nothing affects court on Wednesday, but if anyone's trying to reach us, they can do so by social media messaging, stopping by our offices, or email cityhall@bonnersprings.org. That's all.
On to council items, and we'll start down there with you, Ms. Gurley.
Nothing from me tonight.
Ms. Wood?
Nothing from me tonight.
Mr. McMahon?
The chambers, right, had the polar plunge, and I'm sure a few can speak to that. I'll just keep it short for me. I did go, I just credit Emily and her staff. I'm super excited about happy hearts and people that are willing to donate to that project, and I just, I see, I didn't see nothing but good stuff out of that, and big numbers, participants, and people showing up to watch. I was a spectator. I decided I'd rather give money than to jump in the water, but it was, we had a really good time. I left, and I made a comment, I think they went to the glass cat or something like that. Just as just a thought, this is kind of organic here. You can almost make that an all-day thing, right? Have somebody cook barbecue or something later on and have a big shing ding. I mean, take, you know, just take over the lake, I guess. I don't know, but it's all for the right reasons. But kudos to Emily, and I want to send out my condolences to Emily. She had lost her grandfather, and it's, you're never prepared for that, and my thoughts and prayers are going out to her and her family.
Ms. Long?
I second that, Mark, the condolences to Emily and her family, but also wanted to echo what I had written down was the chamber event as well as the penguin plunge. Those two things alone, being very close together in time, and also just on their own period, take a lot of planning, consideration, time, et cetera. It's a huge undertaking, and so just thank you to Emily and everyone else who was involved in getting those two events off the ground, up and running. I can't even imagine all of the moving parts that are involved with that, but I know that it's got to be exhausting, and both of them were really great, reflected incredibly well on the community here in Bonner Springs, both events, and just wanted to give a little bit of time and attention to that, as well as congratulations to Ms. Vogon on your new position, and also really excited about the apartments, the movement. We get asked a lot about what's going on there, when is the ground gonna break, and now we don't have to answer that question anymore. It's all starting, so that's all I have.
Yeah, a couple of things. I see Matt's still here, so I'll ask. There's supposed to be a water line extension or a looping on Tiblo Lane that starts this year. Do you have an estimated date when that might start? Okay, that'd be great, because the former city manager had said that was gonna be a priority item for twenty twenty-five, and so I'm just looking forward to that getting done. I've been trying to get that done for a decade or two, so, anyway. Other than that, Amber, glad you're here. You already know how I feel about everything. You all know how I feel. I'm glad it's done. It's over. We're ready to go.
Actually, we don't, because you didn't share earlier, Bob, but that's okay. I did want to say one thing, because I was kind of nosy today. I was at Sherwin-Williams, but when I was there, I came through on that one street by Old Dominion, and there was this blue pickup truck that was over in that plot or the, the partial that's for QuickTrip. And so, I stopped, and I talked to the gentleman, and he had blueprints and all that stuff out, so, and I will say that things are getting ready to get busy over there, and I thought, and then to come into Bonner to see that excavator setting at the parking lot down at one-two-oh or whatever that is. I butcher everything. Did I say the polar plunge a while ago instead of the penguin plunge? Any rate, I stand corrected, but, yeah, so, it's, things are happening. It's like nothing going, nothing going, and all of a sudden, boom, things get busy. It's springtime or close to it, and congratulations, Amber.
Anything else, Bob?
No.
One more thing. I'm just kidding.
On to the mayor's report. I just have two things real quickly. I just want to, talking about social media and all the projects going on, thank you, Ms. Gurley, and for the website that you keep updated and all the projects going on around town. Now that social media has started firing up again, there are people now going, what's going on down there? I have started taking, and that link to the city website, posting it right there, so people can read for themselves exactly what is happening. So, if you see those comments on social media, link, send that link to the city website page so they can see those developments that are going on. Secondly, when we're talking about water, you know, Second Street and the sidewalks, water line, since the weather has now started to take a turn, are we looking at having that hopefully get wrapped up in the, sometime in the near future, all that construction's going on down there for the water line? We, I like how it's just real ambiguous, yep. Any kind of timeframe, like maybe the end of April, March, April, May?